Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Ah, y'all are making me feel like I'm at home in Birmingham, Alabama, with the call and response. I'm excited to be here this afternoon for this distinguished panel to discuss the legacy of the landmark decision, Brown v. Board of Education, that was decided 65 years ago. The themes that were teased out in the Brown v. Board decision obviously have impacted our history. They're impacting what we're dealing with present day. But we think that there are some really important themes that will determine some of the things that we will grapple with when it comes to education in our future as well. And so today, we're excited to have this remarkable panel with us to dig into these things. At my far right, we have Darrell Bradford, Executive Vice President of 50Can. Next up, Margaret Fortune, President and CEO of Fortune Charter Schools, based here in California. And then to my left, we have Cheryl Brown Henderson, who is the Executive Director of the Brown Foundation for Education Equity Excellence and Research. She also happens to be the daughter of the named plaintiff in the Brown v. Board of Education decision. And last, but certainly not least, Dr. Michael Lomax, who is the President and CEO of the United Negro College Fund. And so, given the theme for today and the obvious relevance that it has for us today, I wanted to start things off by asking the panel to speak directly to what you think the impact and magnitude of the Brown v. Board of Education decision had for you personally and has for us here today. Darrell?
All right. I get to go first. I just want to thank the foundation for inviting me and putting me up here with this incredible panel full of people. I thought you'd describe it as this incredible panel full of people and Darrell. So I've been reading up on the Brown decision, and I think people underestimate its importance, not just in terms of how we look at the experience of African-American people and the struggle to attain quality education, which is sort of deeply linked in the African-American soul, but also the Western, the push for Western democracy. So one of the things that you can find is that a lot of the amicus briefs about, that were filed alongside the Brown decision, were from people like the State Department. There was an ambassador to India who said, "I went to India, and the ambassador said to me, 'Why does your country tolerate the lynching of Negroes?'" And so, this was all, like, Brown is happening against the backdrop of the West trying to convince the world that capitalist democracies were the way to go forward versus communism or other systems of government. And so, you can't, like, you can, like, the struggle of black people is the struggle of America in so many different ways, and this was just another way. And I feel like that is undersold in the magnitude of the decision to give black kids the same chance to go to schools that white kids went to, whether or not they went to schools of white kids. So I think we're all living this out. I think there are other aspects of it, too. Some of us integrated schools, right, at various points in time, which I think is also its own sort of positive and negative experience. I'd love to talk to you about it later.
Yeah, so I think that we're all examples of living history. And it's a real pleasure to be on this panel and honor, really, with Cheryl Brown Henderson, who is an example of living history in such a special way in the history of our country. For me, my parents are on the very front end of the baby boom. So, you know, I was born in 1971. I am their youngest child. And they left the segregated South on purpose. They met on a blind date when they were students in North Carolina in Greensboro. My mother went to Bennett Women's College, and my father went to North Carolina A&amp;T. And when they were there together, they participated in the sit-ins in the Walgreens in Greensboro. So we grew up in a household of educators. They were considered a good match because they were both from the families of educators. So that's what made it all acceptable. But they also grew up with this spirit of activism, which they transferred to us as children. And Brown v. Board of Education was always the standard for how we thought of equity and fairness. And they decided to participate in integration by moving to California. They moved to an all-white neighborhood. And we integrated our schools as the only black kids in class by virtue of where they were allowed to buy a home, which was a very different experience for them, having come from the South to have the freedom to buy a home where the schools were the best. And those schools in where I grew up, which is Sacramento, California, were in the suburbs of Sacramento. And so, you know, we grew up as the only black kids, which made for some very awkward picture days. Because in that time, they passed out these ace combs that you're supposed to be able to work through your hair, which doesn't quite work the same way for a black kid. So my experience with integration is, with this understanding, is that there's no place for separate but equal in public schools. But it's also of the experience of the children of that fighting generation that gained us opportunities. And those experiences, quite frankly, are mixed. And so now, I am the founder of a network of nonprofit tuition-free public charter schools focused on closing the African-American achievement gap by preparing kids for college starting in kindergarten. And we have been successful in reversing the achievement gap in mathematics. And I'd love to share more about that later and how that plays into the conversation of Brown v. Board of Education as we look at it today and going forward.
Thank you for sharing that, Margaret. And I guarantee you you will have an opportunity to share more about that work. Dr. Lomax, do you mind?
Oh, okay, Cheryl's last, okay. So I'm a recovering politician, so I have to write out my notes or I'll just go on forever, all right? So I am your parents' generation. And from 1940 to 1960, my parents owned a small weekly newspaper in Los Angeles, The Tribune. And they fought and supported, fought for and supported the NAACP in their work. And there were two very important cases that Thurgood Marshall argued before the Supreme Court, one of which came out of California. And it was the case in California which removed restrictive covenants from real estate and allowed black people and Latinos and Asians to buy property in areas in Los Angeles and across the state where they wanted to live and where, but where there were these restrictive covenants, which stopped them from being able to purchase them. And of course, the other major case, and that was a case that was one in the 1950s. And then the other obvious big case was Brown v. Board. And, you know, and I remember meeting Thurgood Marshall in the 1950s in California when he came out here working with other lawyers on the residential case. Following the Brown ruling, Los Angeles continued to use residential districting to keep white schools white and black and brown and Asian schools black and brown and Asian. And southern cities used a range of strategies from shutting down all of the public schools to creating Seg academies as a way of maintaining racially separated schools. To attend high school at the high-performing high school in Los Angeles, I wanted to go to LA High, Los Angeles High School, and didn't live quite in the district. I had to use my grandfather's address and claim to live with him in order to cross the line and go to a school that met my expectations and my family's expectations that it would prepare me for college. Unlike your parents, who came to California to experience integration, my mother took us south to Alabama in 1961 to experience segregation so that she could cover the civil rights movement. And that lasted six months. But during that six months, I attended Tuskegee Institute High School, where I went to school with the sons and daughters of sharecroppers, in a rigidly segregated school in 1961, which I would remind you was seven years after the Brown ruling. And their schools were still rigidly segregated. As a parent in Atlanta, beginning in 1974, when my first daughter was born, and throughout my adult life, well, when I still had kids at home, in the 1990s, when I was president of a college in New Orleans and my children went to New Orleans public schools, where in both cases, what school you attended was based on where you lived. My children, because we always chose to live in black neighborhoods, my children always would have been assigned to attend racially homogeneous black schools. That was not something we wanted, so we were able to pay to send them to parochial school in Los, in New Orleans or send them to private school in Atlanta. As a grandparent of five in Atlanta today, neighborhood schools in southwest Atlanta, which is the black middle-class area, remain rigidly separated. Yeah, 100% black schools. And if you want your kid to go to an integrated school, you've got to figure out how to transport them across town and get them access to an integrated school. My five grandchildren have attended high-performing charters, Drew and Kip, with other black and brown children. And just like my parents, my grandchildren's parents want their children to attend high-performing schools that will prepare them for college, career, and life. The difference today is that they now can send them to charters with 100% black and brown children and still get the education that will prepare them for college, career, and life. 65 years after Brown, our public schools in this nation remain largely, I don't want to use segregated because it's not de jure segregation, but they remain as largely balkanized racially. Why has Brown failed? Brown has failed because white people don't want to integrate with black people. I mean, they don't want their kids to go to school with black kids. Black parents have determined in the 21st century that education remains the best and surest route to social and economic mobility. This is an urgent issue for black parents and for low-income students. The question of how to make American public education work remains an existential issue for black parents and families 65 years after Brown. The difference is that integration is no longer the goal because it is too elusive. We can't solve for everything. But what remains the goal is to, how do we find high-performing schools that will prepare our children for life, for careers, and for college? And how do we do that without transporting them across the city, out of their communities, chasing after the best schools, which are largely the schools where middle and upper-income white children attend?
And Dr. Brown Henderson, no one in this room has been as personally affected by this decision as you. There's no question about that. How did it impact you? And then, when you take a look at the landscape, how much progress and what progress have we made?
Well, let me start by, I guess, that admission. I realize that you all probably have spent many happy vacation hours in Kansas. Is that correct? And I do that because I think oftentimes we don't associate the civil rights gains with a place like Kansas. But Kansas was pivotal to the civil rights history of this country. And especially during the mid-20th century, well, even before that, that Kansas was a very progressive state and brought things like Brown v. Board and the Appeal to Reason, which was a newspaper that was exported from Kansas around the country that talked about progressive issues. And I know, as the panel continues, we will have dialogue about many of the points that Dr. Lomax has made. But in answer to the question about what is it, I believe, what significance does Brown hold for the nation and for all of us in this room? I think a lot of people don't realize that Brown v. Board, schools were merely the battlefront, but society was the target. So largely African-American parents and attorneys were trying to bring meaning to the 14th Amendment to the Constitution because African-Americans were living outside of constitutional protection, which is why Brown is considered a landmark, not so much about school de Seg as giving us an interpretation of the 14th Amendment and how we, as US citizens, cannot have our rights arbitrarily restricted by state and local governments, which is what racial segregation was all about. So what Brown did on the big picture was it galvanized African-Americans. It is considered the grandfather of African-American achievement. So when people suggest that perhaps it didn't do what it was intended, I think you have to dig down, get into the weeds, and realize it was about creating opportunity where opportunity had not existed before. And in that sense, it did succeed. And I know, as we continue talking, we'll talk about some of the pushback to Brown v. Board, which was immediate and has not stopped, even to this day. So I think that's important to note. In terms of the impact on me personally and our lives as the named family in Brown v. Board, I imagine the Miranda family and the Loving family and the folks behind Roe v. Wade, I imagine all of them have had their share of aha moments, if you will. And we used to talk about having that Brown experience, how when you're finally in high school and you open up a history book, you know, and there it is. It was not something we talked about at home. My father died in 1961, just seven years after the Brown decision. I was 10 years old. Mom was a homemaker. And typical 1950s family. Dad worked, mom was at home managing the home. So when he died, you know, our priorities shifted. First of all, we never talked about it at home, anyway. And then our priorities shifted even more once he passed away. So 1964 would have been the first anniversary, I remember, 10 years out. And I remember coming home from school. I was 13, and I'm dating myself. I was 13, and I noticed was a white stranger on our front porch. And we lived in an integrated neighborhood. I mean, Kansas is a lot of land, not many people, and certainly not many people of color. So living in integrated settings, working in integrated workplaces was just the norm. Although Kansas participated in the national concept of separate but equal at the elementary level. We'll talk about that more, anyway. So I'm walking up, and this was my first aha moment, recognizing that maybe this was something unique. Walked up to this gentleman, and he noticed I looked a little reticent because I didn't recognize him as being any of the white men that lived in our neighborhood. So he put out his hand, and he said, "Hi, my name is Charles Caroll. And I'm here, I have a show called On the Road with Charles Caroll, and I'm here for the 10th anniversary of Brown v. Board." You know, and I'm 13, and I thought, well, so what? So I go in the house, and it's a mess, you know, wires and all that. And I go onto my room and stay out of grown folks' business. So that was kind of the first recognition that this was something unique. But as a 13-year-old, how do I know that down the block, you know, Johnny's parents weren't going through the same thing? So it took some time to understand the significance, the importance in terms of how it started impacting my life. When I decided that our family, we created the Brown Foundation in 1988, really needed to take more ownership and become responsible stewards of this history, teach the country about its background, about its impact, about its importance, about its significance. And we've been doing that ever since, and we'll be talking more about that in a moment. But come on out to Kansas, y'all.
I was gonna say, careful. You may have 1,100 folks showing up on your front lawn. But you just mentioned student achievement and how Brown itself was aimed at not just black student achievement, but putting structures in place that would benefit all students. And we just recently, as a nation, got our latest report card on student achievement and saw that we're stagnant on that front. The numbers haven't moved in a direction that we all want them to, and particularly for black students and for students of color. There still remains a pretty large gap between how students of color are performing and how white students are performing on those exams. And so with Brown as background, I'm curious, what have you all seen as barriers to not only black student achievement, but larger student achievement within America? What are some of the things that you think we can do to actually move that needle, given where we are today?
I'd love to jump in on that one because, you know, at Fortune, we have a very deliberate focus on studying success. You know, I personally get a little frustrated by just talking about the weather report when it comes to black students because you end up having a conversation about all the misery statistics. And you can get yourself to a place where you think that there is no solution because there has been such little progress, not just since Brown, but since the liberation from slavery. There's been such little progress. But that's why we make a very intentional study of where we see high performance and the practice of those educators who are able to get high performance from African-American students. Like, for example, there are 16 schools in the state of California, where we sit today, that have a majority African-American student population that are in the top half of student achievement. And I'm glad to say that four of my schools are on that list. And the important thing, I think, for policymakers to do is not just talk about the achievement gap writ large, but actually convene the educators that have been successful in closing it. This is very simple, but very rarely ever done, is to actually convene those educators who have schools that are in the majority African-American, that are in the top half of student achievement, regardless of race, to, one, have those folks get to know each other, have them understand why it is that they're good. Because so many people can be good at a thing, but they can't explain it to anybody else as to why they're good at the thing. They just say, "Well, I just do it." But to solve this problem, we actually have to go deep with those individuals and say, "Why are you good at what you do?" We have to build a community of practice with those individuals so that they know each other and rely on each other as a resource and that they're not isolated. Because you can imagine, in a state where there are 6 million students, if only 16 schools know how to get it right with black students, that tells you that these educators are unique and talented in a particular kind of way. So not only do they need to know each other and know why they're good and build a community of practice, we need to join them with others that care about this issue so that we can replicate their practices. Now, I will say that of the 16 schools on the list, 14 of them are nonprofit public charter schools. What typically happens in this state, especially now, where the wave of anti-charter-school sentiment has swept California, not successfully, I will add, because they were unsuccessful in getting a charter school moratorium and unsuccessful in getting a charter school cap in a state where you have a supermajority of Democrats. They couldn't get those issues out of the House of Origin. But what typically happens is the charter schools are swept to the side as if we don't matter, when in point of fact, we've studied this issue and become specialists at it, at how to have academic rigor for African-American students and prepare them to the level of excellence.
Can I, I just want to build on this, too. While I'm less inclined to be prescriptive about ways to be successful at this, here are two things you should not do if you want to close the achievement gap. The first one is, don't cap or close schools that are closing it. This is hiding in plain sight. Right? And don't put that in your presidential education agenda, either, right? And don't put it in your governor's education agenda because it seems very popular right now to say that I'm gonna cap or close schools that are doing right by kids of color in places that have never had schools that do that, and you get cheers, depending on the room you're in. So you should not do that. The second thing I would just say, which is like, maybe like, a little more frustrating about this, the achievement of African-American students is not a zero sum, which is to say, when one black kid gets educated, it doesn't mean another one doesn't. So often, this discussion, like, think about all the obligations, all the conversations you have about alternatives, all the conversations you have about different routes to success are about some mythical kid who is currently not being educated, who will continue to not be educated more egregiously if this kid gets a chance to become the best version of themselves. And so I don't, like, nobody, nobody does that with white kids. Nobody's like, "Ashworth, you can't go to Harvard because, you know, Brittany won't get into Yale." So I would just, you have to, like, I just want, because this is a room full of policymakers. I just want you to consider that, that it's like, no kid's excellent education is at the expense of any other kid's excellent education. And that if people are doing right, doing this well, to Margaret's point, that's not the school you want to close down. That's the school you want to get, that's not the one you want to question, that's the one you want to learn from, and that's the one you want to scale up.
Yeah. If I might on that, you know, I think it's, there is no more important issue for African-Americans than academic achievement for our children. There is no more fraught issue in American history than educating African-Americans. We've been here for 400 years, and for 250 of those years, it was against the law to educate us. And there's a legacy. And I heard that, Margaret, you're, I mean, this is not just something that happened. This is something that has happened over time. The urgency of this issue The urgency of this issue is in all of the terrible statistics. We achieve less academically, we live shorter lives, we are unhealthier, we have fewer resources, we have less wealth. We're always the highest in achieving the lowest, we're always the least in achieving the most. That is utterly unacceptable for this nation and for African-Americans, and I believe that we, as a community, have an absolutely urgent requirement to come together, to fight in every way that we can, to ensure that we don't continue this terrible cycle within our community. But there, and there are a lot of reasons for that, but, you know, so I think this is, this is an absolutely urgent issue. One of the things we have learned because of Ed Reform is that there are different school models that are doing the job and doing it effectively. And I think, to your point, Margaret, we need to really focus on, what are the conditions that create success, not what are the conditions that continue to foster, well, I think, to look at it in a positive way. And, and, and then to, but I think it's easy to say things that play to the audience that we speak to. And, you know, if I come in this audience and say, you know, "Don't put a cap on charters," I'm gonna get applause, because this is a group that supports them. If I go into a group of traditional public schools and I say, "Put, don't, you know, don't allow charters," I'll get applause as well. I think, I think what we've got to do is to focus on the problem and building a coalition across all educators to ensure that we're succeeding with young people. And so my challenge this, today, is that, and the one thing I want to say to Ed Reformers is, it's time to reset. It's time to rethink the strategies we've employed, because they haven't been successful. They've created a them-us environment. And how do we create one big us environment? And that may sound Pollyannaish, it may sound, you know, naive, but I think, I think if we don't do that, we're not going to achieve what we need to achieve. And I think that, for me, the biggest issue that I have, and I've been in this movement for 20-plus years, is that there have been mistakes made on both sides. And I think it now is the time, as we think about inequality and inequity and more generations suffering from, how do we break that cycle? And I think we break it by finding ways to work together across lines of difference, including educational lines of difference.
Yeah, I agree, but let me say this, that during the pre-Brown era, African-American children were achieving. I think one thing I heard in the comment about the successful charters here in California was the unique set of skills that resulted in academic success. What has to be inherent in those skills, we haven't heard yet, is the belief in the children sitting in front of you and the willingness to put in the hard work. I taught school back in the day, back in the early '70s, right out of college. And I taught at the school that had been the segregated school that my sisters and mother and others had attended. When I got there, it was still 95% African-American, because the neighborhood around the school had changed such. One of the most powerful tools of any government, at state, local, federal, as well as governing bodies, is propaganda. Now, I would go to the student, to the teacher's lounge, and there were only two African-American teachers in the building, and it was surprising to me, as a new teacher, that my white colleagues looked at teaching in that building as punishment. And they were constantly putting in requests for transfers. So if you're so focused and fixated on not wanting to be there, it's probably, you're probably not doing the job of teaching, because you're not associating with, you're not attaching to, you're not believing in, you're not nurturing the students in front of you. Every child can learn, absent some terrible disability. But oftentimes, we have to be willing to put in the hard work. Traditional public schools and public charter schools, yes, should be cross-pollinating. There has never been a time in public education where we have not had what we used to call "alternative schools."
Right.
And they were schools where children went that were not cutting it. Either they were pregnant as teens, or they were acting out so much in, in the classrooms that they needed to be put in a setting where the classes were smaller and there could be more one-on-one work with them. It bothers me immensely that there is a cottage industry around statistics. There is a cottage industry around the rhetoric of failure, which is why I mentioned propaganda being a powerful tool. So I used to tell my colleagues, and I tell teachers when I speak to groups today, teaching requires interpersonal relationships. You don't succeed unless kids think you care about them, and unless you really do care about them. And I learned that as a new teacher, so I would spend at least the first week or two of getting to know who was sitting in the classroom, what was the circumstances of where they lived, what about their parents? I would tell them about me before we cracked the textbook, so that we were in this together. You know, there are so many very basic steps that we are not encouraging our educators to engage in, you know? Because when Juan Williams wrote the book Thurgood Marshall, American Revolutionary, Thurgood Marshall himself, in those three years of interviews, said that Brown was never about sitting next to white children, it was about the resources that were following the white children. So how on earth do we allow the propaganda of saying that there are failing, underfunded public schools, when the public collectively has more money than God herself? How do we say that? I think it's more about the expectation, the accountability, supporting our teachers, respect for teachers. Now, there's so many other aspects of this. It is very complex, and it's very multifaceted, and it's not just about the complexion of the child sitting in the classroom, it's about the biases that walk in, it's about the poverty perhaps in their, in their communities, it's about the rhetoric of failure that they are spoon-fed every day, to the point that they believe it too. So I want to see more of what I've heard in terms of public charters and traditional public schools working together, because we all have one goal, which is educating our children.
Well, you just touched on a hot-button issue, which is funding when it comes to the school choice environment. And I'm curious, given the fact that the Brown decision itself was around equitable funding, and there's this perception that the school choice movement itself removes funding from a traditional school environment and places it outside of the traditional school environment, making it more difficult to educate students generally, what is your perspective on that? What are your thoughts and then your reactions to those that bring that sort of perception to the fore?
I think Darrell was touching on that, when he, there, there is in the rhetoric of, of the NEA, something that is like, there is a zero-sum game, that if you support public charter schools, somehow that's taking money away from district-run public schools, when the reality is, it is not a zero-sum game. There is, what we really should be looking at is, where are, are there practices that should be replicated? I mean, I've worked for both. I started my career in the school district that I graduated high school. My father was a school superintendent. He handed me my diploma. So I've grown up with a healthy respect for traditional district schools. It was, it was what we grew up with. But even he, as a superintendent, promoted charter schools when he learned of it, because for him, there was a population of students that weren't coming to his school anyway. And they were the students of homeschool parents. So he started a public charter school for homeschool parents to welcome those families back into the district. So as a public school superintendent, he looked at charter schools as a part of his toolkit. And because in this particular space of black education, and, and, you know, I don't like to talk about the misery statistics, but it doesn't mean I don't know them, right? 79% of black kids in California can't do math at grade level. 67% can't read or write at grade level. So that's what, that's the sense of urgency that Dr. Lomax is talking about, that should send us running to these schools, whether they are district-run public schools, and two of them on the list are, or whether they are nonprofit public charter schools, which all charter schools in the state of California are nonprofit. It should send us running to understand what these educators are doing, running to learn about, yes, setting the tone for learning and saying, "These are the rules by which we will do school. These are the expectations, and before we ever crack a textbook, we're gonna talk about how this classroom is organized. We're gonna set our culture." And then we'll have the liberty, because we understand how this classroom is organized, to have rigorous instruction in reading, to have rigorous instruction in mathematics, to have innovative instruction in science, to have innovative and exciting instruction in music, making the connection between music and mathematics. You know, these are a skill set that can be learned if we can put down our dukes, because it's hard to collaborate when you're fighting with each other, and have a conversation about what we can learn from each other. And tomorrow, the Democrats will be onstage, right, at the debate in Atlanta, actually today, today, this evening. They'll, they're onstage to talk about this.
Maybe now.
Maybe now. Maybe right now. Maybe some of you are watching that debate.
I mean, we are three hours behind.
But my point is that you cannot lock, stock, and barrel, go for an agenda that says, "We're gonna villainize these types of educators and elevate these other types of educators," especially given that some of the aspects that are in collective bargaining agreements limit educators from having the time to actually spend with African-American students. One of our pillars is more time. We have a longer school day and a longer school year, and if you're at grade level, you get to come on, come to school on Saturday, and the kids are excited about it. If we had the collective bargaining agreements that are the agreements that most of our schools live by, our teachers wouldn't be allowed to do it. And yet, in my school system, 64% of my teachers are teachers of color. They're signing up for the mission, and they understand that being a teacher of color is not some type of magic wand solution, but then they actually have to learn how to do the work and practice with, with the work. So I just think that there's a lot for us to collaborate on, and I appreciate what Cory Booker had to say with the op-ed that he ran in, that ran in the New York Times a couple of days ago, where he acknowledged that as the mayor of Newark, he had a nuanced solution, and some of that was high-performing public charter schools. And the last thing I want to say about this is, is this, in this period of time, just like with Reconstruction, when the first thing that blacks did when we were free was grab a book and start normal schools for teachers and start small school, rural schools to educate freed men and women, that's what's happening in this generation, where, if you look at that list, I'm going back to my list of 16, most of the people on that list who are leading these schools are black people.
Can I, can I make just two quick, quick points on this? Because you asked this, this question about finance, which I think is really important. So there are lots of things that trouble me about our discussions about maximizing the opportunity to achieve it of low-income kids of color in this country. The thing that troubles me the most is hypocrisy. So you, any kid going from a traditional district school to a charter school is siphoning precious resources in the pursuit of their own education. When you move from Milburn to Livingston, at the Tony End of New Jersey, guess what you're doing? Just switching schools, right? So, so why is it that if you go from downtown LA to Burbank, nobody says anything? But if you go from the war school in the Valley to KIP, you're corrupting democracy, right? So I just, I just want, I just want to highlight that. I am not at all saying that school finance mechanisms should not be updated for the world that we have created. I think that there are boxes that both teams are in. I know some really reform-minded superintendents, one of them is my boy Chris Searson in the front row, hey, Chris, who have struggled under the, under finance rules that are enormously inflexible for districts, actually, in, in, wealthy school districts, in this particular one, an urban one. And I know charter school folks who are having all kinds of times, finding buildings or whatever, right? So I just think that, that we should just revisit that in an honest way. The second thing I would just say is that, like, as much as I care a lot about parent choice, I'm a good schools advocate. And I'm a good schools advocate because I don't think anybody has a monopoly on success. And the reason why I believe that is, is, we're gonna do a simple exercise. Who in here has kids? Raise your hand. Who in here has more than one kid? All right, so I bet sometimes you look at one of them, and you're like, "You're mine." And you look at the other one, and you're like, "I don't know where you came from." So if two kids had had the same parents, they live in the same house, they breathe the same air, they eat the same food, they drink the same water, their parents have the same values, right? If they can meet enormously distant, different things, it just doesn't seem possible that any, like, set of, of, you know, monolithic school districts could meet all of those needs, right? That's just a defect of the model. So again, a question about honesty, a question about, like, the difference and potential of our kids, right? And one that is grounded in, like, a future that's more flexible for people on the resource, because resources do matter, so.
Absolutely. Yeah. And so, given the fact that we are in a room full of policymakers, and you all have hinted at this and touched on this tangentially, I'm curious, given the successes that all of you have had in your careers and building coalitions of the willing, what advice do you have for the folks in this room around what they can do to help foster the sorts of environments that will allow us to build excellent educational futures?
I'll, I'll jump in with you. You know, as I said, I've been involved with Ed Reformers now for almost 25 years. Started off in New Orleans, when I was a president of a college there, and started going into public schools in New Orleans and working with Teach for America, and went on the Teach for America board, where I served, God, 20-plus years. And then went from there to the KIP board, and I've served on the KIP Foundation now for 15 years. And I've seen what innovation and new models and different approaches can do. But I've also seen that, you know, that these extraordinary educators have not been very good collaborators, and they haven't been very good at building coalitions, and they've, it's been their way or the highway, and, and they've taken on fights that, you know, with traditional schools that they just haven't won. I mean, they've, they've taken on, and lost, and lost big, and lost convincingly, and I've done that personally when I've run for office, lost convincingly, you know, sometimes you just, it takes getting hit with a club before you realize that maybe there's a different way. And so, one of the things that I've tried to say to the charter school movement is, you need to build relationships where one and one doesn't equal two, it equals 11. And, 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 you know, the charter schools have said, you know, "We want to produce kids who are gonna go on to college, and the colleges we want them to go to are the most elite, you know, the highest-performing private and public research universities." And when I said to them, you know, "The likelihood is that most of these kids, so many of these kids, who will be first-gen in their families to go to college, are very likely gonna opt to go to black colleges," I said, "No, no, 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 they're not very good. We're gonna send them to the, to the best institutions." Well, lo and behold, if you look at KIP today, those kids are choosing, African-American high school graduates are choosing to go to black colleges. And KIP is having to get real smart about, "What are black colleges? What's the difference, you know? And, and why do these create environments which are, produce strong results?" And, and so, one of the things I've said to them is, you know, "If, if you all who do so well with Republicans in Congress, and we who do so well with Democrats in Congress, if we got together and had a shared agenda for not K through 12 and post-secondary, but a K through, pre-K through 16 agenda for education, maybe we could get your Republicans and my Democrats together, and we could, and we could pass some bills." I'm saying this to the Ed Reformers, you gotta start building coalitions, and they have to be with people who are in those communities and who have deep roots in those communities and who can influence in those communities. I just, I just, I think that that's so important for us to do. This has got to begin with somebody saying, "I'm willing to sit down and build a coalition with somebody who's not like me."
Well, you know, one thing I would say, I'd like to see the Secretary of Education not be appointed, because every four to eight years, there's a new sheriff in town. And every 48 years, there's a new thematic agenda for public education. I think if it was, if there was some continuity whereby this was a senior executive service career person that had the mission of seeing to it that public schools had what they need, be they charter, be they're traditional, you know, working and state by state to ensure the quality that we need, when you change sheriffs every four to eight years, now, that just isn't possible. And it seems nonsensical for a nation that indicates it values education and truly understands that education is a foundation for citizenship. That being the case, then we should have some continuity at the top level. I used to be a policymaker at the state level through the Kansas, US, the Kansas Board of Education. I bring that up because our challenge at that time was women and girls, and getting them into non-trad- and getting them into non-traditional careers and occupation, but also students with disabilities and modifying those small rural schools to accommodate. But at the same time, in the '80s, we were talking about African-American males as an endangered species, in the '80s. And we're playing that same old record yet again. And I contend that we can't really move the needle unless we acknowledge the history on which all of this rests and how, when our country pushed back to Brown v. Board, it was vitriolic, and it came from Congress, nearly 100 elected officials in the Southern Manifesto and cutely called the doctrine of constitutional principles. But it made clear that those congressional representatives wanted race to be central to who had access to education. They made it clear. They encouraged those school districts across the South that planned to defy the court's decision. They called Brown v. Board judicial overreach. No, they opened the door for their version of choice, which was allowing white parents to opt out of Brown v. Board or implementing or going to integrated schools. They supported those schools in the South that punished school districts that planned to move forward with Brown v. Board. They shuttered schools rather than allow them to comply, closing schools in Virginia, for example, for five years. I was in Virginia the end of September on a book tour that we were doing. And one of the people stood up in the audience, it was a white male, and he talked about how there was another white male that had come to him in that community, 65 years old. And he said to him, "Before I die, I want to learn how to write kurtzif." Because they had no school to go to, the majority of the people, white and black, in that community. Yet, there were white academies that sprung up because those that intended race to be central to who had access to education saw to it that white families would have some option, some opportunity. You know, I guess we talk about these things all the time. But the foundation that all of this discussion rests on has never been fully examined. Because it's not been left. It's not history. It's present. It's what fuels our ability to say, "When schools were dominated by black and brown children, that there's something wrong with that school." There's no reason that can't be a world-class school. There's no reason why we are not challenging our black and brown youth with AP classes and opportunities and learning how to think critically. You know, just because my complexion is brown doesn't mean my brain is any different than yours. So I think we need to really start at the root of it. Maybe turn that sand to concrete in terms of how we got here and then acknowledge some things that we've carried in to the 21st century with us and then start working on it. Because the skills are here. You're hearing it today. The will is here. You're hearing that today.
So can I just want one quick point on this? Because I think this is a wonderful segue. So this is what I found so frustrating, particularly in... So working in New York City, I'm recovering Manhattanite. That's the only place you can get these socks. And so, you know, New York City has 1.1 million students. It's a nation's largest school district. There's a hot debate about school integration.
Right now.
Right now. Which is a stalking horse, actually, for anti-charter sentiment, specifically in that case. But only 15% of the students are white. So if you want to integrate New York City public schools, what you really need to do is randomly assign all the white kids. And nobody is signing up for that. That'll get your feelings hurt. There's no policymakers being like, "Who me?" So I just highlight that to say that in the end, though I am not good at it, I'm actually a supporter of math. And the numbers don't add up to get the goal that is being held out there right now. I mean, I think we have to have a... I think an integrated society is a better one. I think to the extent that people can come together in voluntary communities that are diverse to achieve goals together, I think everybody is better off. But birth rates in the West are going down, and we're heading toward a majority-minority school system with faster than anybody ever expected. And so, in the future, the goal that is being sold as the ultimate goal of the present will not be possible. Then what will we do? Then what will we do? So I just think we just have to have a serious conversation about the changing complexion of America, not just politically, but physically, and what that means to the goal of school integration. And if it is not sort of mathematically, politically possible to achieve for all of the reasons that have been highlighted here, some of them of massive resistance, some of them of mathematicians, then what do we do to make sure you get the school that helps you become, or the education that helps you become the best version of yourself? How do we answer that question? And I would love to see this debate right now. Because it's hot, man. Don't tweet the wrong thing at Nikole Hannah-Jones. You get hurt for that. Like, it's hot. And it's hot because people care about it for lots of different reasons, many of them valid. But it may be unworkable. What will we do if it was?
So let's have a conversation now. So you just broached the topic. Is that a worthy goal that we should aspire to? Given the legacy of Brown and the fact that, yes, it was a decision that came down and it impacted funding, "separate but equal" is the language that came out, but it was directly impacting the integration of schools clearly as well?
I've got to defend the Brown decision. Only in that, no. Because I'm not pleased with what part of the decision Earl Warren chose to read.
And there's additional language that matters.
And I know he's been the governor of California. I don't know how you feel about it. But I don't agree with what he chose. The opinion is 14 pages long.
The first one?
The part of the opinion that I share with people is the statement that, and is in the decision, that education is the most important function of state and local governments and that no child can be expected to succeed in life without a benefit of an education. And then it goes on from there. I wish he'd read that. Because perhaps we would have really rolled up our sleeves and recognized through Brown that we are now hearing from the Supreme Court the importance of education. Now, wouldn't that have been something? So I don't agree. And I think because he chose to read, "separate but equal has no place," blah, 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 which I don't agree with, I think that's what we're struggling with, which is why we had court-ordered D-Seg in the '70s, into the '80s. That's why we were trying to do headcounts that I agree with you is not possible. So there's so many parts of Brown v. Board that I think we fixate on the wrong thing. Do me a favor. Although I'm not a big Google girl, but Google it, read it. And recognize that there are things in that decision that are not just supportable, but would cause us to get back on mission of educating the children we have.
And I think that's the point. It's about educating the children to a level of excellence. It's, can African-American students read at grade level? Can they do mathematics at grade level? Can they do science at grade level? When you look at reading, are they exposed to rich text? Can they annotate the text? Do they have access to literature? The original sources? And I want to come back to Dr. Lomax's point in terms of highlighting the lessons learned by the KIPs of the world. And I want to acknowledge that there are charter school leaders like me. I'm an African-American woman. I founded our schools. The majority of my board are African-American women. They're civically engaged. And there's a whole sector of black and brown leaders of color that have founded these schools as an act of self-determination. We control the governance. Whatever the budget is, we can control that. We control the hiring and firing, and we decide what success looks like. So the question becomes, what would you do if you could do it yourself? And there are plenty of examples across the country of what that looks like. And they are successful examples led by people of color that would be successful by any standard. So then, the thing I come to is Elizabeth Warren, who says that the federal funding should be stripped from those schools to replicate. Well, my high school and my middle school, we replicated with the very federal funding that she says should no longer exist because of some bad actor somewhere, and I don't know who those people are. So coming back to the question about money. Money with no accountability for results is worthless. It's worthless. And if we're going to talk... And that is what has happened in California. We've swung so far to the left. We're so Indigo. We're not even blue anymore. We're Indigo.
Isn't that this room?
I don't think so. Oh, really? Indigo Room? Okay, all right. So that is telling. And I say this as a Democrat, that on our march to the left, we are marching over people who should be our allies. And I do think what you've raised again and again, Dr. Lomax, is about coalition building. And that's what uniquely charter schools run by people of color inherently bring. My charter school is a partnership with the Black press. Those majority-black women are a part of the National Coalition of Black Women. I am the education advisor for Al Sharpton's National Action Network.
All right.
We are an ecosystem of the black community. So if you shake and try to destroy our school, you shake the entire ecosystem of the black community in Sacramento.
And I want to just... I think the point I've tried to make here today is, I support charters, I support ed reform, but I think it's done an ineffective job making its case, in part because the people making the case don't look like you. And so, I'd say, that's why I say it's time to reset. And I'm not going to take responsibility for what Elizabeth Warren says or does, but I'm going to tell you something about the Democrats running for office. In 2016, Bernie Sanders went all across the nation talking about free college. And he went on black college campuses, and he spoke in behalf of free college. But the thing about it, he spoke at my alma mater, Morehouse College. He spoke at Spelman College, where I used to teach. And he spoke at Dillard University. And he went to South Carolina, and he spoke at the private historically black colleges. And what none of the students in the audience do who were so excited about what he was saying was that his program would not have helped them go to college because he was only talking about free public institutions. So this year, United Negro College Fund has met with everybody running for president on the Democrat side. And we have gone through the list of our priorities. And we've said, not only, these are the positions that we need for successful historically black colleges. And we do want to reduce the amount of debt that students have to undertake. And there should be increases in Pell Grants. And there should be funding that goes to historically black colleges. They've all signed off on it. And they're not walking around, going around to our campuses and promoting policies which are antithetical to historically black colleges. But you know what? If we had gone to them in partnership with the charter school movement, we'd have also said, "When we look at the highest-performing students who come to us from charter schools, those students are performing at a higher level. They're ready for college, and they're graduating at higher rates."
It's not too late.
It's not too late.
They'll be in LA on December 19.
What I'm saying is that this movement has got to embrace you, but it's also got to embrace me. And we've got to build a coalition. And if we will build a coalition, I think we can do a lot to get smarter, smarter and better policies with regard to what happens to our children. This is consequential for them and for us.
So using that as the lens, I mean, if we're going to take the legacy of Brown, we need to do what we can to make sure that there is opportunity, there's educational excellence for all students in this nation and particularly for black students since we're the ones up here having this conversation, then I'm not going to let you all off the hook. We've got a room full of policymakers. They're the ones that are going to be in the rooms, are going to be tasked with deciding what these policies look like to actually build this environment. What are the things that you can tangibly tell them to do? What are the tactical moves that they can make to help build this sort of environment? Where this can be a reality.
So I'll step on that one first. I'll tell you I have cocktails, if you want to know. So two things. The first one, before I give one thing I think people could consider, is that I just want to take a moment to make sure that the bright light of bipartisanship does not go out in this room. And I highlight that because politics, as everyone in here knows, is about addition, not subtraction. And anything that gets you fewer friends is going to be harder to do, and more friends makes it easier to do. And so, historically, we have been, our mistakes aside, many of which Dr. Lomax highlighted, was right on and highlighting, we've been people who've been able to partner on narrow slivers of agreement across oceans of difference. And that was a feature of the movement, not a defect. And that seems to have been lost in the current discussion. So I would just like to reaffirm to people So, I would just like to reaffirm to people that the ability to get together, to unite, to do right with people that you don't agree with on everything is an essential feature of improving our democracy, and certainly of improving education for kids of color or any kids. So, that's the one thing. The second thing I would just say is that I, over time, have become much more open to, like, bottom-up solutions, right? Which are inherently riskier and which require more nuanced definitions of success. And so, I think the, as a policymaker, let's say if you're a charter auth, if you have control of a charter board, if you are an education chair, I would ask you, and charters are just an example, but it's an example because so many policies wrapped up in it, to think about, one, how your state's charter law, right, incentivizes or disincentivizes innovation and/or people from historically underrepresented communities who want to start schools in your state, right? Because minority entrepreneurs, which is what charter starters of color are, suffer from the same issues that minority entrepreneurs suffer from in every other sector of business. So, that is legitimate. In doing so, you also may have to revisit your definition of success. I'm actually an asset, like, an accountability hawk, but the mood around norming everything to language arts and math scores has changed a great deal. I think everybody knows that is politically difficult. So, while I believe everybody should achieve a grade level, I think we need to build a more nuanced version of success that allows the first half of that, of that discussion to go. Those are my two suggestions, and I will be around to talk about other ones later.
So, as we come to a close, these are my hot topics. Protect parent choice, do not drink the Kool-Aid, protect it. Leaders convene. Convene those schools that are majority African-American, that are in the top half of student performance, before you consider race. Convene those people. And help them understand why they are great at what they do, so that you can export that in your state, and understand the policy conditions that allow them to do what they do. And towards that end, all policy comes in threes, I would encourage skinny contracts for low-performing schools. Those things that actually prevent schools from having more time, from having more professional development, from having more focus on results that are in collective bargaining agreements, consider making those contracts skinny for the schools that are at the bottom, so that you can see increased success.
Dr. Lomax, your thoughts?
Well, I mean, a shared, a shared federal policy agenda of the charter school movement and historically black colleges, I think that's, I think that would be beneficial.
That means I agree.
And, and we stand ready to do that, and I think it would demonstrate the inherent connection between what happens in K through 12 and what happens in post-secondary in behalf of communities of color. It would, it would, it would build on the strengths that both have, and we could get some things done that I don't, together that I don't think we get done separately.
Absolutely. And then, Dr. Brown Henderson, the last one.
Well, I think that we need to convince policymakers and really the public that this is in their self-interest. You know, when something is in your best interest personally, if you can understand it at that level, you know, then there's more of a willingness to work together to form the coalitions that you mentioned, you know, all of those things. I think that policymakers would also be well-served by partnering, not just with HBCUs, but even with those folks that are out there in popular culture, which drives me crazy at how much attention, how much air they suck out of a room when it comes to our young people. But we need to use that air, you know? If that's the case, put, put, I don't know, LeBron on every night, asking on television, on an ad campaign, "Have you done your homework tonight?" I mean, figure out ways to tap into the voices that are being heard. I know back in the day, when George H.W. Bush was president, and we were looking at parents as teachers, that was a very strong initiative. I think it, it showed the kind of respect we need to show to our parents, that we recognize that they are the first teachers, but they don't stop being teachers once their children get into school. So somehow, to reinvigorate the notion that parents are your partners in this, but treat them as partners in educating your children.
Ah.
Thank you. And finally, let's not get caught up, and certainly never be arrogant, that there's only one best type of education. Because I'm also an advocate for the skilled trades and vocational education. Because as we sit in this room, I'm always reminded that a PhD did not wire this room, did not lay this carpet, you know? And when my car is broken, I'm not looking for a doctor in philosophy, I'm looking for a mechanic. So, I think we need to place value on all types of education. We need to elevate all of those ways we educate our children. And we certainly need to elevate our parents and our educators in doing the hard work that they do every day.
Absolutely. And with that, we'll say thank you to the distinguished panel, and thank you to all of you for your time and attention.